Oh, yeah, actually, I'm feeling tired. That's what happens when you go to the gym.
Yeah. Good, okay, great. So, um, call a meeting to order, roll call, please. Are you ready? Okay, good.
Chairman Gorey.
Here.
Member Carey.
Here.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
Vice Chair Mark Marsh.
Here.
Ultra-member Henigan.
Here.
Um, let the record show that Member Kosinski is absent with notice.
Let's all stand and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. Next item, Commissioner comments.
I have.
Yes.
Um, last meeting, I think we started discussing, uh, regulating the demolition process. And there's probably a lot of ways that we could go with that. And I can understand why somebody who's gonna buy a property will demolish before they start, because I believe it lowers their tax ba- rate until the home is completed. Uh, so, we want to have change that's managed and efficient in this town. I think we should perhaps direct our staff to look into what's commonly used in other towns and try to create something that doesn't mean we're gonna have a field of dreams for a long time. And, uh, but also will allow people to buy things and if something comes up and they can't immediately jump on it, to pursue it. So, that's, that was my thought.
So, by immediately pursue it, Dave, what, what, what do you mean?
Well, for example, I mean, this, this new property we're gonna examine today, am I allowed to talk about, use that as a reference? The, the new buyer wants to demolish what is on the lot. On my, end of my street, there's a lot that is, was demolished long ago. It's been maintained reasonably well, and I've heard there's a possibility that it's finally gonna be developed. So, I, I think, you know, rather than say you have to have something before you can knock down the house, we could give them a grace period. And, uh, they start, the clock runs, and closer they get to the end of it, they either comply or we can, we can, we could have a code, possibly.
Good, good point. So, rather than allow something to languish just sitting for too long, yeah, good.
Yeah, and, and I, I will say, I talked to Brian, and he said, there's always a possibility you could always have another 2007 or 2008, and money gets tight, and dreams have to be set back. And maybe we could create an allowance for something like that.
Good point. Any other Commissioner comments?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the other end of the spectrum. Are we making progress at all on, uh, being able to enforce a completion time? And the houses that are sitting seventy-five percent done and nothing's going on and on and on?
Not yet, Neil. We've had several staff vacations back to back. So, we had Brian out, and then I was out, Wayne was out at the same time, and now Lisa Truppi is out. So, she's going to be back this week, and then we'll regroup, and all of us can meet together. We have several issues that we're talking about, demolitions, synthetic turf, that issue, and many more. We have our signs and sheds and everything, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
We'll be regrouping as soon as staff can all get together again.
Great. Anybody else? I have one quick comment. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Bruce Gimme in the audience today. Bruce is a former planning and zoning member, Commissioner, and Chairman. And I'd like to thank him for his many years of community service. Thank you, Bruce.
I second that.
Good, okay, moving on to minutes, approval of minutes of the, uh, from the July seventeenth, uh, meeting. Any comments regarding minutes?
Yeah, I, I have a couple. I do, I overheard a conversation earlier there. They're getting briefer, which is good, more concise. But in doing so, I think we've, um, missed a few things. Um, on page five at the bottom, uh, Vice Chair Marsh noted that the ten feet from all openings is a health safety measure needed. It's a life safety, not a health safety. There's a big difference.
It's a what? Life safety.
Life safety code. And then on page seven, um, in the middle of the page, um, the development plan review. We discussed, or I mentioned, the term deferral versus denial. And I didn't see it. Did I miss it?
Well, you do talk about that should deny but aim to defer. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, alright. Stated that the board does not defer to staff. I don't know what that means. It's a simple deferral for the applicant to be able to come back, based on what was discussed. That's it.
Great. Any other comments?
Yeah, I, there were, uh, on page five, it's, it's not too much, but it's in the first sentence and the last paragraph. Uh, we were talking about the setbacks.
Right.
And it just says, Chairman Gorey noted, it's a difficult matter as some lots are less than twenty feet. And I, maybe you can explain exactly what you said, Jerry.
Yeah, they're, they're, because of the fifteen-foot setback, it's very difficult to accommodate, uh, a twenty-foot setback from the house for the exhaust, because the exhaust pipe is an integral part of the generator itself. So, the, the numbers just don't work. Wayne was gonna take another look at that. So, I would suggest then that we change that to, um, uh, as some lots, because of the setback, do not allow for a twenty-five-foot distance between the house and the exhaust. But, what's the bad effect?
Fill in the blanks.
Yeah, fill in the blanks, please. Make it sound good. Strike that from the minutes. I misspoke. Okay. If no other comments, a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve as amended, though.
As amended, thank you.
Yes.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Okay, let's move on to the, um, quasi-judicial hearing, um, portion of this meeting. So, the Town Attorney, if you'll please ask for ex parte comments.
Okay, does any member have any ex parte communication on, um, this concept site plan review of sixty-two sixty North Ocean?
No.
Seeing that.
Sorry, I may have talked to the owners, though. They reached out to me, and I declined.
Okay.
So, Carla, if you'd swear in, for those who wish to testify today?
Okay, all those wish to speak, please stand. Okay, I. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Alrighty.
Thank you. Uh, staff report, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The applicant in front of you at sixty-two sixty North Ocean is proposing demolition of the existing structure to be replaced by a forty-three-hundred-square-foot home consisting of five bedrooms plus a library and six and a half bathrooms. So, this is reviewed with the condition that it would be a total of five bedrooms, six and a half bathrooms. Also included is a, uh, a cabana area with the rear guest parking. The percentages for the data calculations were all looked at. Uh, we have no objection to that. We do request that on the guest parking in the rear, it needs to be ten feet from the property line, and, uh, the landscaping, uh, be maintained between that and the adjacent properties. At the present time, I'll, we have no other legal issues with the property. So, according to the board's recommendation, I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant and their architect, who is here. Mark will make a presentation on PowerPoint.
Sure, good. The applicant would care to make a presentation?
Yes, sir.
Please step up and your name and address, please.
Yes, sir, my name is Mark Hunley. My address is sixty-two thirty-seven Island Way. I live in Margate, but the address that we're here to look at is sixty-two sixty North Ocean Boulevard. And along with myself, I'd like to introduce Bob and Allison Adams. They are the property owners, and, uh.
Good morning.
Welcome to town.
And, and also behind them is my business partner and the other qualifying architect in our firm, Paul Charette. I'd also like to let, thank Wayne, Lisa, and Carla for all of their assistance in getting this application submitted, the excellent communication that we've had back and forth. Uh, and I'd like to thank the Commission for taking the time to listen to us this morning. As Wayne said, the project summary itself, uh, there's an existing single-family structure on the site. Uh, the, the overall concept of the new project is a single-family residence, five bedrooms, which that bedroom count does include the cabana in the back. Six and a half baths. It's a two-story at forty-three-hundred square feet. Could you flip a slide for me? Uh, the location is actually just south of here on Ocean Boulevard. We're almost within the three-hundred-foot radius now that is requested of neighbor notification. Please. Uh, you can see the three-hundred-foot radius there. And then, this is the current survey of the property. When we initially looked at the property, um, obviously, some of the things that concerned us were a current lack of compliance with zoning code. We definitely wanted to take that into account and comply. We wanted to make sure that the new project took care of that. Right now, that's a satellite view of it. Lots of additions, lots of renovations have gone on. The lot was not very well-maintained from a landscaping point of view. In fact, if you flip one more time, you can see from the front, you couldn't even see the house. Since then, the lot has been cleared from landscaping. And, uh, from what I understand, an application has been submitted for a construction fence in order to, uh, with, with screening, uh, not only in order to be able to, uh, to present a little bit better facade there to the street, as was discussed earlier, but also, uh, provide some protection from being able to access the pool and things like that. So, uh, this, this slide is just one that's requested by the city and the, and the zoning, uh, group, and I absolutely love it. It's, uh, you know, obviously, black is, uh, the structure, impervious, uh, paver driveways, pool areas in gray, and then landscaping in white. You've also got some data calculations that went along with our application on that. Flip one more. New site plan we've got laid out, just kinda mimics what we just saw there. Um, the advantage to this one is it does comply with all setbacks and zoning applications and regulations and ordinances. Um, as Wayne mentioned, one of the things that they requested was a ten-foot, um, distance for the guest parking in the rear. This plan actually has that revision already taken into account. Uh, so that has been accomplished. Uh, landscaping plan, that was included also, because, uh, one of the other comments was, in addition to the ten feet from the rear property line, they're wanting, they requested some screening to the rear of the property, and this shows that that screening has been accounted for as well, based on those comments that came from, from Wayne and the team. One more. It's just the first floor plan. Um, you can see the cabana in the, in the, in the back. We've got a two-car side-load garage up front, and it's a master-down scenario where we've got one bedroom downstairs in addition to the cabana. Large get, great room and, and kind of a, using the house to screen privacy for the, uh, pool and patio in the rear. Second floor, yeah, that's right. Second floor has the other three bedrooms upstairs. And the hatched area is an area of flat roof, which we'll get into the flat roof calculations that are required by design criteria and zoning ordinances in just a moment. Front elevation, uh, just, uh, trying to maintain all of the Town of Ocean Ridge's, uh, design criteria. We went through and took a look very closely at window coverage percentage, uh, flat roof areas, ensuring that, uh, there was a sufficient level of ornamentation to the project without any kind of blank wall area. Could you flip one more? There we go. So, there's the actual calculations. Total front wall area, the window area, and the wall area itself, showing that the thirty-two and a half percent of window area more than meets the fifteen percent minimums requested. And the flat roof area of eleven-point-three-one percent is, is less than the fifteen percent maximum allowed as well. Please. This, uh, this slide actually shows the front elevation with kind of an outline of the previous elevation. And the reason that we really wanted to show this is you can see that the current structure projects significantly on either side of the proposed residence. Again, we're making sure to bring this, this residence down into applicable zoning ordinances and making sure to meet those setback requirements. We're literally taking a non-conforming residence and making sure that it is conforming. Uh, this was part of the application process, just the data calculations. In case there were any questions on it, we wanted to make sure to have this available for any questions. Uh, probably the most important part, again, is, is down at the bottom, the, uh, the setbacks are being, are all being met. Uh, rear rendering, uh, again, this is just from the, from the rear. You can see the pool there and the, the, uh, privacy afforded by the, the residence up front. And then, one more. And this is the, the cons- conceptual front rendering overall. Matches up with the elevations that we just showed and shows a, a finalized view of what the project's going to look like. I thank the Commission for allowing us to present, and welcome any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? About, oh, sorry, Mark, please.
No, I, I commend you. It's a very nice presentation. It's a well-balanced design. Just curious, did you ever look at flipping it?
We have not looked at flipping it.
No, I, I mean, it's not, it's just curious that, you know, the sun and the pool and screening out that lovely adjacent property that you have to the south there.
I think the main reason is, is that there is an alleyway to the north, and part of the thought was is that we could utilize that for servicing things such as, you know, the septic tank, guest parking, could all be accessed from that side.
No, I, I, I'm only just curious. It, it works both ways, so it's fine. So, I think, you know, for all those that are here, this is kind of what we're looking for is, I think, it's got balance, it's somewhat contemporary, but still reaches back to some of the traditional elements. And I think it's, it's nice to see, and I commend the owners, 'cause I think what's there now, now it's been unsheathed, is quite scary.
I would hold that an understatement, sir.
Wish Lynn was here, I don't see her around, but she kept this beauty hidden. The only, uh, thing I have a concern of is the landscaping. I think it's very weak. I think, um, again, we, we're propagating the Palm City of the world here. You have magnolia, I know enough to be dangerous, but I'm not sure magnolia like, like the oceanfront environment. I'd rather see more, uh, canopy trees, again, to mitigate some of the presence of A-one-A. But I think you, you need to go back and revisit this plan. I think it's, it's not doing the, the property any justice.
Understood.
But apart from that, I think it's a welcome and welcome to the new owners. I'll pass it on to my.
Has a demolition plan been submitted for this property?
No.
No?
No, the intention was that it would be part of the.
Okay, but the, but the lot was stripped of all vegetation, pretty much, right?
Yes.
All the mature trees that were on the property. Do we have a town ordinance that covers what should be maintained or retained from an existing property? Or does demolition mean you can literally bulldoze the site?
The latter, unfortunately, yeah. I mean, it's up to the owners to identify immature, unvaluable vegetation, but I think it states now that you can clear the lot, and there's no historical ordinance.
I mean, it, it seems that we're letting people take away and then asking them to put back something that won't be to the state that the existing tree's maturity would have had. It's gonna take ten years to get that back.
Yeah, unfortunately, and in most cases, and the sad thing is to relocate, if it's in the building area, to relocate a, a mature.
I mean, I know other, I know other communities require certain types of trees or certain ages of trees or maturities of trees to be maintained or to be, to be retained.
Only on this historical designation, like landmarking. That's the only.
Is that actually what they're doing in Gulfstream? Is that historic?
That's, they are an open book there. They, it's a lot of wishing going on, but they buy legally, they can't. And I'll have Brian answer that.
Can I make just, uh, we're talking about what was taken out, and I think we all agree that it was a mess. I don't know what the trees were. Were they ficus? Were they, was there anything really important? When I looked at it, I didn't see anything but a mess.
Well, I'm just looking at the, the overall satellite view or whatever it was, Google Earth view or whatever you showed up there of the trees. I don't know if, I'm just saying, as a town, should we be doing some sort of assessment? Or have that be part, have the, we're, we're requiring a landscape plan later, but should we have required one as part of the demolition to see what we could at, at least advocate is retained? I understand we might not legally be able to require it to be maintained.
I don't know how you enforce it, that's.
If I could say something, what we would try to do in the, uh, because of the overgrowth that was there, and a lot of it was overgrowth.
Absolutely.
Um, the vegetation in of itself, we staffed it go out, Lisa did go out, took a, took a look at it. And, um, it was determined that a lot of it could just be removed without, without any form of permitting, uh, process. Uh, the understanding, we've been in contact with the owners, and originally, they were gonna keep the structure. And part of that was okay. They wanted to do an assessment to see what is able to be salvaged and so on. Obviously, we're at a point where, and this is a, a much better, uh, approach. And therefore, the, 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 what's gonna go back in the landscape and plan will be more discussion, as Mark indicated, and Mark indicated, we're, we're all gonna be discussing this further. But I agree with your point, Neil. What we have done is, on certain demolition projects, before demolition takes place, we'll do a pre-demo site, which means they'll have to mark what trees are gonna be kept on the property. So, on the lot clearing portion of it. This didn't go through that process, so that's why it's missing here. This, they, they cleared the land to determine what they had, uh, so it worked kinda like backwards. And as such, right now, they're saying, okay, we did this, but at the same time, it was a lot of overgrowth that was there. It really wasn't, uh, vegetation that, you know, would have been necessarily pleasing.
Yeah, I'm not pointing any fingers at the homeowner. That's why, at the be, very beginning of the discussion, I said, what does the town do? I, I, I think, I think it's something that needs to be considered on every lot, that we're doing knock-down build or whatever.
Well, if, if you'll remember, there was a, uh, a lot knocked down on the east side of A-one-A, just south of the Melnick place. And they did preserve several trees, and I can remember some of the members of the audience, it was very important to them, and I, I would agree, they, they saved some nice trees. But, you know, a lot of times, you're gonna complicate the construction process if you put too much emphasis on saving everything. I mean, there, this lot here is gonna be difficult enough as it is.
Absolutely, it's, I mean, it's, it's very narrow for, for the size home they're trying to put on, and I think the home, um, very much complements the neighborhood. I'm just advocating that we have a process that, um, we, we consider trying to keep rather than replant.
Good.
I, I think, I think we're all encouraged, and I mean, but I don't know how you enforce it, that's my only concern.
Okay.
Staff already does look at that process when they're going through the demolition process, so, um, we can look at the codes and make sure everything's in place to maybe strengthen that a little.
And my second question is, um, I would like a little education, uh, either from the chief or, um, from some, someone else on town staff as to, uh, access on the alleyways. What, just as a, a citizen or someone from out of town or whatever, what, what, what is permitted use of the alleyways? Is the, is the alleyway a street? Formally a street? Because we're here, what we're doing here is we're permitting one of the required parking spaces to occupy something that I don't know if, if literally I can drive down A-one-A and turn up at that alleyway and go into that parking space. What, what?
The parking space in the rear is, 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 is a bonus. They've met the.
Requirements of the front, which is what I thought.
Yes.
So, I was wondering why it was being designated, but it's still brought up, it's still brought up the question to me as, if that had have been a required space on this lot or any other, is it appropriate that it comes off an alley?
The alleyway is a right-of-way, um, and that's available to the public for use. Um, that's, that's, uh, ingress and egress can, it can be used for that purpose. It, however, is, um, and I'll defer to the chief on this one, um, because we both expressed concern on it. However, it's currently being used by other residents as well, so.
I mean, I, just as a formality, I, I would like to make the suggestion that the required parking spaces are identified at the front and not off the alleyway.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's in the front. The required parking space is in the front.
But I mean, I'm, I'm talking about the docu, the documentation that's being submitted.
Okay.
I, I, I don't like to see that as a precedent. Go ahead.
So, I think you, you've, um, you've brought up a very interesting question in town, because we have alleyways, we have right-of-ways, we have easements. And this particular case, and I will only speak to this particular case, the alleyway or the town's right-of-way behind, uh, this residence and that sandwiches Ocean Avenue and Hudson has been traditionally used for probably fifty. Can you help me? Okay, forever? Has been used for the purpose of ingress and egress to the rear of those particular homes, and the town has allowed driveways and parking spots in this particular case. In other areas, I think you would be looking at a different scenario. So, I think we would have to have the Town Attorney research that particular alleyway to determine if, if we could enforce that further, because we have existing garages, driveways, and parking spaces already as a portion of that alleyway to probably, I wanna say a thousand or fifteen-hundred feet in from A-one-A. And then it becomes basically a right-of-way again. It, it gets overgrown, and you can't operate a vehicle down there. Uh, the town does maintain those alleyways, such as, um, the one be, behind Coconut and A-one-A, Hudson and A-one-A, for the purpose of ingress and egress for maintenance. But in this case, I believe that historic use has been to allow parking and garages in that alleyway for those particular homes that are by both sides. I think Mr. Marsh can attest to that. I think once you get further down the street, that doesn't occur anymore.
Correct. Not to look at the current crop, uh, residences of precedence, but, uh, obviously, with it not complying with certain zoning applications, but the garage for the current residence is accessed from the alley as well.
Yeah, the town, the town has approved two or three projects that have the garages on the alley in recent years, I mean, within the last twenty years. As the chief says, I think it's a precedent, but it's a good question, whether you should be allowed to use that or, and access.
Can I add?
Go ahead.
I, Mark had some criticism of magnolias, which are beautiful trees, but they're really a dirty tree. I mean, they drop leaves, they drop flowers, and it, was there any other criticism you had of the landscaping other than those two elements, Mark?
Just missing a lot of their open space. And predominantly palms, which I guess we're seeing more and more, and I think it's the duty of this planning and zoning board to see that we get more canopy and shade trees.
Well, I, I agree with you, but you know, of course, I love palm trees.
Anybody that's got palms, take them to.
Good.
I have ten coconuts in my.
Yeah, I have a few comments, um, and questions for the applicant. I have some additional questions, which I'll, gonna come back to staff after the applicant's presentation. Just kind of flipping through here on the. Just kind of flipping through here on the site plan, SP1. I thought there was an item, but there really isn't. The next is A1. And on A1 outside of the library, there looks to be, I'm not really sure what this box is. Is this a wall? Is this a patio? It doesn't show on your rendering. So, so what are, what, what's the intention of that squared in space there?
It's just an uncovered, flat patio area. No roof.
No, 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 no wall, nothing vertical.
Nothing vertical.
Thank you. Because you're, you know, you're very close to the rear elevation of the house next door. I'm sorry, I kind of skipped ahead. I want to welcome that. Adams, it's so nice to have an application here before us that's not a spec builder, that it's an owner that's coming into our community. We're glad to have you here. We're grateful that you're doing a, a, a nice and admirable approach to this property. It is a challenging lot, and I think a lot of the comments kind of come around that. There is also on the south elevation a wooden fence, that's an existing wooden fence. Is that going to be replaced? It didn't look like it was in very good condition, but that's just a comment to look into.
We, we will review and also discuss with the owners and the landscape architect.
I, I was having a little trouble with the front elevation versus the floor plan versus the, the rendering. And specifically, the front door scheme, the rendering seems to show an undivided light for the, for the front, and shows an extension of the transom light divided into three elements. And on the elevation, it's one, you know, what, what's the intention here? I'd just like to, I'd like to know what we're getting. I'm not saying that one's better than the other, but they conflict.
Well, I would definitely say that the elevations from sheet A4, which is the one that you've got there from our, our set.
I think I'm looking at A3, but.
A3, yeah. Okay, A3 is the previous elevation one. Yep, that works. That one would be the one that is the most current, as far as revisions go or anything like that. The, the rendering was done as an artist conceptual set.
So the intention on the double hung windows on either side of the front door and, and immediately above that is to only divide the, the windows on the fixed sash and not the movable sash? Or are you going to divide it on, on all of them? Again, just, what, what's the intention here? You see, you get a nice rendering, you say, oh, that's nice, and then you look at the elevation, and it's different.
Right. The, the drawn architectural elevation would be the most current and be the one that is.
So you're going to mix it up on those four windows?
Yes.
And then probably the most significant on the elevation questions is that this balcony area, I assume that's decorative, not functional?
That's correct.
And so this is not a door, but just a, a large window there in the center above the front door?
That is correct.
On A2, it shows windows on either side of that door, so you have three, three windows. And on the elevation, you're showing a shutter.
Well, it's a window screen with a shutter.
It's a window screen. Okay, so there is, that, so both are correct?
Yes.
What, what we'll see from the street, which is what I care more about.
Understood.
The Adams care about from the inside, but is, it will be the shuttered effect that we see here?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's really the questions that I have for the applicant. And again, I have some staff questions that we'll come back to.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you for a good presentation, and I will also say that it's a very complimentary plan. Complements the community very nicely. Well done.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great.
Let's turn it over to the audience and the audience comments.
Thank you all.
Betty, were you sworn in? I don't remember who's.
I, I just wanted to make one comment on the.
Can we, can we?
Chief, yes, I mean, it's, it's not, I guess, it's not imperative that anybody speaking be sworn in. However, you all can take that testimony. Normally, in a quasi judicial hearing, anybody who's speaking, even members of the public, are sworn in. You don't have to be, but it's just, then the board can take into account, it's, it's not sworn testimony. So, you know, you can speak, not speak, do, do whatever you want.
Betty being on one east Ocean Avenue. As you all know, alleyways are my passion. I made them whole own to all of them for a different reason. That alleyway was traditionally used back in the dark ages when people had chauffeurs, a garage, and the chauffeur slept in the garage. And the entrance, until they started rearranging the houses for the cars, and the chauffeur was on that alleyway. That's how long it's been in existence for cars to go in and out. And it wasn't until about 1970, when the person that owns the house next to me brought in a load of rock and elevated that ground there, which has caused some flooding. That was Jay Finn, best, how long has it been since he's been here? A long time. But then you could still enter most of the garages through the back alley there.
Thank you. What's a chauffeur?
An Uber.
An Uber, oh, it's an Uber. Thank you, Betty. That's, appreciate that, historical comment. Any other audience comments? If none, we'll come back to the commission for discussion and questions of staff.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to resubmitting a landscape plan. Some more than keeping what we expect to have here.
Second?
So I.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Yeah, I'll second that. I do have a number of questions that this project kind of brings forward that aren't necessarily criticisms of the project, but are concerns. There one is a specific, and this is the one, Brian, that I mentioned always going to come up. The survey of the property shows a platted 20-foot setback in the rear of the property. Our setback for the rear is 15 feet, and what's drawn here is about right around 17 feet, which is then encroaching into that 20-foot platted setback. You know, I don't know the history of how it got platted. It could have been a neighbor that sold the property that said, I want to make sure nothing gets built closer than 20 feet to my property. But I, I'm trying to understand how we can approve something at 17 feet when there's a platted setback at 20.
I'd probably have to, to answer the question, I would have to take a look at the plat to see what the restrictions. I don't know if Wayne has looked at that. Did you, I, I guess, look to see what? I'm assuming that our planner may have looked at that, but I don't want to make that assumption to say, yes, that's, that's okay without looking at it.
I'll have to take a look at that and do the survey.
I mean, things are put on plaits for a reason, and restrictions are put there for, for a purpose. And I know it may encumber the development of the property, but we have to, you know, we have a role here.
The plat, the plat rules.
That's the question for Brian and staff. So we'll, we'll leave it with them to resolve that, but I wanted to point it out. You know, the other thing I noticed, and I went over yesterday, and, you know, we've gotten kind of used to in our neighborhoods that we have a very wide right of way. So the front yard, what people presume is the front yards and a lot of the, there is about 25 feet from the curb end to where their property actually starts. It's very different here along A1A. This is the first one I looked at. We have a sidewalk that's one foot off the pavement of A1A. The current house sits, according to the survey, forty-seven, almost 48 feet off. And we're going, with the 25-foot front setback here, we're going to have the garage portion of this building closer to A1A than any other building I have seen along A1A. You know, I think of these two south of us here that were recently built, and, and they're setback considerably more than that with a lot more green space. The, the big house on the corner of Hudson is setback considerably more from A1A than that's going to be. And I, I think we have to be aware, I mean, they're building it within the codes, but we may have something that, we're fortunate that they did this L-shaped. But technically, they could have put the front door of the house right at that setback line. And I don't think that's something that we want as a town, so we need to be thinking about that, too. It's, it's, again, it's compliant here, so. I do have, Penny's not here to bring this up, so I'll have to take her role. The library sure seems to meet the guidelines that we've described as a bedroom. And you listed five bedrooms, but if you count the cabana and the library, that's six?
No, it's, it's a four-bedroom home, and I counted the library as a bedroom, making it five. That's what I did.
You, you said in your write-up, you counted the cabana as five. I, you said five, including the cabana.
I didn't include the cabana as a bedroom, because it's, it doesn't have a closet in the cabana. The cabana itself is just a bathroom and.
The cabanas. It's got, yeah, well, I think, and again, Penny's been the one that's kind of taken the lead on this. And we've, we've directed, because of other issues in other homes, that we've, when, when a room has a door and has the capability of being used as a bedroom, we count it as a bedroom. So I, again, this, you, you'll have an opportunity after this. This is part of what, what staff should go back and, and take a look at. And then I think that affects parking counts and make sure you're there on that.
We'll take a second look at that.
Right. You know, this, the alleyway's been talked about, but this is a rather blind intersection here. So, and I think this house historically has used this alleyway, but let's not, not in the future encourage more in and out on these alleyways. It's, another thing I noticed going there yesterday is, is how close this public sidewalk is. If possible, if staff can encourage, I'm assuming during construction, our, our experience has been that these sidewalks get broken up so much that they have to be replaced by the applicant. Can we get the applicant to move it west to the property line and a little bit further? Because it actually jogs at this property. It's just as close as any place in the whole town.
It's a, it's a DOT right of way, so we'll have to consult the DOT as far as any construction and moving that sidewalk. And as far as repairing it and any damage, they'll replace it back to the same location that it is because it's a DOT right of way.
If we can take this opportunity to even get that up, get that sidewalk another, you know, 14, 18 inches over to the property line, it's, it's kind of a public safety issue. We're very, very close there. And then, since there isn't room here for an off-site swale, will there be a swale and a drain trench be placed onsite?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Any other board comments? We do have a motion for approval on the, on the table. Unless there are any other comments, maybe we have a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rick, was that an aye?
Aye.
All right, okay, good. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you, thank you. Good presentation. Excuse me, and again, welcome to town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Any other business? If not, we'll close the, well, we didn't close the equation as per Tracy's. Sorry about that, Tracy, but I think we're okay.
Yes.
Yes, I'll say we're okay. Good. So unless there's any other business, we'll entertain a motion to a juror.
Wayne, did you want to discuss, because next meeting is going to be our official criteria in reviewing a full submittal, correct?
Yes, correct. So if there's anything that the board, because this will be so, before our next meeting, if there's anything the board would like changed or, or suggestions that we can, as staff, incorporate into the meetings as a presentation, let us know. What we try to do is pretty much give as much information that we can obtain from the applicant to present that to you through the size plans that you have to review it, in addition to PowerPoint presentations and so on. So if there's anything else in addition that you'd like to see before the next meeting, please let us know.
I think we're going to, you know, and Rick summed it up very well, the issues, which are, you know, setbacks, engineering. Lisa's got to be much more careful and concentrate on the, the actual submittal. Make any request or any, you know, in pre-submittal, because you, you do set up a pre-submittal.
And that's, that's, that's one of the things I want to take into consideration for the next meeting. The, the complete review for engineering wasn't done at this stage. So it's more of a cursory, assisting the applicant, this is what the expectations are, making sure these things are in place so that when the full permit package comes in, these are the items that need to be there for us to accept it. So one of the considerations that we may look at is for the next meeting that it does go through more a detailed engineering review.
Yeah, I think it's, just summing up here, engineering is critical, and obviously landscaping is becoming important element as well. So that's above the aesthetics and the other building and zoning criteria. It just needs to, I think we need to get a more comprehensive submittal. If we're going to evaluate it, we need more better information.
Can I just say something that I think might work? Because Rick brought up some great things, and Mark always brings up great things, and Neil's brought up some good points. We're kind of doing things as we move forward. And perhaps we might, with these things that were brought up today, even though we don't need more meetings, maybe a workshop might be beneficial where we could hash some of this stuff out based on the experience we're getting as we move forward.
Good. I was going to make that suggestion. Please, Rock, you go first.
I think it'd be incumbent on the board members to maybe sit with staff versus a whole workshop, because I think it's going to be difficult to get everybody. But I think the invitation should be to the board to, if there are concerns or, you know, they, they may want to just go in a week ahead and, and talk to Wayne and see what's on the agenda.
That's fine.
I mean, I, I, I'm encouraging participation by the board, so rather than coming here and then having to.
And I think this is a continuation of what's been a working process. And we've gotten to the next level, which will begin in August. And let's give that a couple of meetings and see how it goes. And we may need to go back to the drawing board or maybe not, so.
To my point of, you know, how soon can we get applications? Because if we get them like on a Friday or Saturday before the meeting, you know, that doesn't give, if somebody really, I mean, Rick brought up some points that should have been, maybe looked in more detail. How soon, is there a cutoff time?
We, we, we've got the timeline set up, and a lot of the, a lot, a lot has to do with the applicant making sure that they've answered the comment. So we go through a comment, then they respond to that comment, the whole process for them. The whole process for them to meet a specific month meeting is 45 days. So it starts 45 days. They'll bring in their, their application package, and then the dialogue begins back and forth, trying to make sure that that package is suitable to be brought before the board. If it's not, then it gets canceled before the board meeting. Presently, everything really comes down to the, pretty much to the last minute by the time they get there. However, if you give us a timeline, we'll work backwards from that.
Yeah, I, I think most municipalities have at least two weeks.
I was going to say.
Ahead, so that it gives staff time to get back to the applicant and also the board to be able to, you know, look at it informally.
Okay, if, if, I was, if, if you wanted two weeks for a complete package before the board, then they may need 60 days now. That's, it may go back that far. We can try a week within the same timeframe, if that's.
Yeah, I mean, let's see, I, it's, again, we're.
If we do two, if we do two weeks, it might interfere with town commission packages as well because the week prior to your meeting, we're busy doing town commission packages.
Will you do other things?
Oh, yeah. So we might want to look at that as well.
All right, I just think the two days ahead is kind of unfair.
What about one week in advance?
Let's try that.
Rick will be at work for a lot of that.
If it was the Friday before the, the week plus the weekend, that would be nice rather than the Monday. Because sometimes a Monday and a Friday aren't much different when you have a full work week, so.
Good. I'd like to thank this board for doing their homework going into this meeting. Well done, good discussions.
I just have one more comment, too, about the engineering review at this stage. If we're going to do a full engineering review at this stage, we might need to revisit the cost of the application because we have to pay the engineer to do that review. And we're already paying her to do the review in the building permit stage. So if we're going to request her to do a review at this stage as well, a second review, we'll need to figure out what those costs might be.
What is the cost of an application now?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
A lot of that is planning, review costs.
That's pretty high.
And then the applicants would be required to civil plan.
Yeah, that does require staff review. It's a lot of money.
You're getting paid too much, obviously.
I don't mind delegating some of the responsibility for some of it, it's okay.
I, I have one other comment. Is there, is there a, a way that we could on certain of these applications require that the landscape architect come and make a presentation also?
Yeah, I think it's, it's voluntary at this stage. I mean, if, if something is denied or deferred, then yes. I think, I think if we can make a judgment and say, you know, the project is deferred because of a lack of landscaping conformity, then I think at that point, we would expect the landscape architect to come back.
Yeah, I think that will be a good way to handle it, yes. Case by case basis.
Right.
Good, okay. But let's keep that as an ongoing item of concern. Okay, great. Unless there are any other comments, motion to adjourn?
So vote.
Second.
All in favor of adjourned? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. I didn't want to ruin the sound, I said.
I, I should try to when I see.